Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is May the 2nd, 2017 at 6:04. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Randy Adams, the pastor of adult education at Granbury Baptist Church, to give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilperson Rose Myers. All rise, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we gather before you, and we think of the words of the wise King Solomon, who as a young man understood that he did not have all the answers. And so, Father, he prayed to you that you would give him an understanding heart. An understanding heart that would know the difference between good and evil, would know the difference of how to govern properly, and finally, Father, know what your will is for your people. Father, I pray this upon this council, that they will seek good wisdom, godly wisdom, and the understanding that comes from knowing the people, knowing the law, and most importantly, knowing you. We ask all these things in your son's most precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in honoring and reciting the pledge of allegiance to our United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now the second pledge. On my behalf, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state under God, one
At this time in the meeting, we've got some proclamations and also a recognition award. I'm going to step down to the podium down here. Our first proclamation is recognizing Police Week, May 14th through the 20th, 2017. Do we have some representative police officers to come forward, please? The official proclamation is, whereas Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Granbury Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and the freedom of citizens of Granbury, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our police department recognize their duties to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the police department of Granbury has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which increasingly provides the vital public service, whereas the police department of Granbury has grown to be the modern and the scientific law enforcement agency, which increasingly provides that service, now therefore, I, Nyn Hewlett, the Mayor of the City of Granbury, call upon all citizens of Granbury and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2017, as Police Week. With the appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may be joined in commemorating the police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for protecting and preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further will call upon all citizens of Granbury to observe Monday, May the 15th, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives, who have become disabled in the performance of duty. Our next proclamation, and I think we have a couple of groups in here, is the Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Do we have some representatives for the motorcycle? I didn't see enough motorcycles out in the parking lot. Do you guys drive cars? Pray to the rain, huh? Thank you for coming in. Our official proclamation is, whereas the month of May marks the traditional start of riding season, motorcycles become more prevalent on the streets, and need to be aware of their presence is of the utmost urgency. And whereas motorcycles are fuel-efficient, reduce urban traffic and parking congestions, and trend lightly on the overworked road systems and transportation infrastructure for which they help provide funding, and whereas the motorcycle is an important and economical mode of transportation involving in such activities as commuting, touring, and recreation, and agricultural. And whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month is designed to increase public awareness about motorcycles, encourage their safe and proper use among motorcycle riders, today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country. And whereas motorcyclists are basically unprotected and are much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers, over two-thirds of car motorcycle crashes and nearly one-half of all motorcycle crashes are caused by the car drivers, not by the motorcyclists. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike in the motorcycle safety issues to reduce the motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities to a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas the campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce the motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all, those fatalities that have endured. Whereas it is that responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to be aware of the motorcyclists and to regard them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. So now therefore, I, Nyn Hewlett, the Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. In the Granbury, Texas, all citizens in our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating of a motorcycle and give the operators the respect on the road that they deserve. Thank you. I think we had, did we have two groups here tonight? I'm sorry. Did we got another one here? Oh, there he is. Our next recognition is recognizing a reward, an award to our financial department. So, our financial department, if you want to come forward. that the City of Granbury, Texas, has received this distinguished budget presentation award for its budget. The award represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and the staff to meet the highest principles of government budgeting. And in order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity budget serves as, number one, a policy document, two, a financial plan, three, an operations guide, and four, a communications device. Budget documents must be rated and proficient in all four categories in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive this award. When a distinguished budget presentation award is granted to the entity, a certificate of recognition for budget presentation is also presented to the individuals or individuals or that department designated as being primarily responsible for having achieved the award. This has been presented to, and Chris, you want to come forward also? To the city manager, Chris Kaufman, Ava Gregory, the Director of Finance, Elizabeth Bailey, financial analyst, and all the other financial officials there. For the budget with financial years beginning in 2015, 1,565 participants received the award. The award participants have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and provide an excellent example for the government throughout North America. So we want to thank you, Ava, for your team and all that you do for helping for the financial and receiving this award. And I will say also that it is a collective achievement through all of our staff, through all of our people, that get all the stuff into our financial department and make it possible for them to run really smooth. And this team does a really good job. So every year, we get this, we have a plaque, this is what the designated presentation award looks like, and then we get a little point. Anybody here with Ava? Ava's really shy, and accepting that a lot of times, I think.
Just keep in mind, 1,500 entities in the whole United States got that, and our finance team has been great doing that over and over again. So thank you very much. It shows a lot about your professionalism and expertise.
All right. At this time in our meeting, we do our citizens' participation, and we do have one person to read, and I don't recognize the name here, so I'm going to go ahead and just kind of read through a little bit of the guidelines here, that the City Council provides an opportunity for citizens to present their concerns and address issues that are no matters of consideration listed. Only one person will approach the microphone at that time, and only that person at the microphone, upon recognition of the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak. The speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer, other than the individual city councils or the staff, and the speaker may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make the information available to the city council or the city manager, if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council shall allow approximately 30 minutes for citizen participation during the designated council meeting. And today, we have a, we got two, I'm sorry. We have a Richard Moses, is that right?
Yes, sir. I'm the committeeman for the share of the road and safety awareness of Hood and Parker County. I have some more signs. They're not the large, but they're the small signs, and I would like to have the ability of the city to let me put more up at wherever the city safely I can put them. And I have the people to do it. I have all the hardware and everything. The signs are paid by us. We get the money gathered up, and we purchase the signs for this program. And that's what I would like to ask of the city.
Thank you, sir. And I will say that if you can get with the city secretary and the city manager, city manager Chris Kaufman here, and he'll allow for the proposed signs to be installed as a permitted item, so just get with the.
Thank you very much.
He's not around, go up and see our city secretary. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. J.C. Campbell.
Mayor, Council, and City Manager, it's a pleasure to be here. I live, not a citizen of Granbury, but I live right across the street from the city limits. But I've been in Granbury since 1960, and the city manager was saying a while ago about there's a lot of departments that don't get the recognition, the proper recognition that they deserve. And I want to talk to you a little bit about Aaron McLean and his Parks Department people. About three weeks ago, we were, my wife and I were going down the East Pearl, and we getting ready to go under the overpass there, the bypass, and she says, "You know, it's a shame the state can't keep their land like the city does theirs." And I said, "You know, that's probably true, but the state has, they could do this probably twice a year." And I said, "The City of Granbury has these folks on staff that really take a lot of pride in what they do, and I don't think they get recognized enough." You can drive anywhere around, there's a parks piece of land, and you'll be proud of it. But I just wanted to say thanks to Aaron and his staff for what they do, because it makes it a real pleasure to know that Granbury has what we've got. And I know they're proud of it, because you can tell that in their work. So, Aaron, thanks a lot.
Thank you, J.C., and thank you, Aaron. At this time, we're going to move into our consent agenda. Council, item number one is to consider approving the city council meeting minutes of April 18th, 2017, regular meeting. The second item is to consider adopting ordinance 17-25, amending ordinance 15-27, which establishes the Capitol Improvements Advisory Committee by allowing that committee to elect a chairperson, chairman, and adding a two-year stagger term for its members. This was just something that was lacking in there, and so it's kind of like a housekeeping thing on that. So, council, you've had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda. Is there any items you'd like to discuss or remove off the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Tony, Councilman Mobley. I have a second, Councilperson Myers. Counsel, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. At this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all the members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551-071, consultation with the attorney threatening and pending litigations. Council, we'll go back in the chambers and we'll return. The council will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken in executive session. We'll now move into our deliberation agenda. The first item being a public hearing and consider the following request of Harbor Lakes Development. Do you have any questions? Do you have any thoughts? Do you have any questions? Do you have any thoughts? Do you have any questions? 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 Do you have any comments or statements for Scott on this item?
Back up one.
Councilman Parsons?
There will be sidewalks all along Harbor Lakes Drive.
Yes, sir. And I spoke with the developer actually before the council meeting, and they will install those.
They're doing the lay-down curbs in, whenever they build a home, are they going to cut them out or leave it where you just drive over it?
I'm going to defer to our, see if our engineer.
Well, I know at Canlin Bay, they didn't do it, and it's really a, I'd rather see us just put regular curbs in and let them cut the driveway. I know it's cheaper to do it this way, but I'm telling you, it doesn't look good. If you've got some cut, some not cut. They all look uniform, it would be great. But the problem with that is, they'll cut some, three houses down is not cut, and you're looking down to a street, and it just doesn't look nice. And I'd rather see them, if they're not going to cut them, I'd rather see them do the regular curb, and that way they got to cut them.
So my recommendation is to actually have the city revisit the public improvement policy regarding the curb cut issue and define that in a little more detail of what the city would like to see in order to manage that.
Not voting on any.
No, sir. What I'm suggesting, because the plat application has a time limitation to it, city council has to.
So what they've done is they've met every letter of the law that we have provided for in our code. We can't arbitrarily change that tonight. We need to go back and change that in our rules for the future. See what I'm saying?
I disagree, but yes, sir.
Am I?
That's correct. So they're vested under the standing public improvement policy regarding curbs.
We're certainly going to take that to the D and Z and work on that for future. But there is some comfort, are all these being built by the same developer, builder? Okay. Do that ex parte after the meeting, okay?
You and Tony get together, yeah.
I like that. Thank you.
That's not part of the most.
Wow.
I just say yea instead of nay, okay?
You can say whatever you want.
Counsel, any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to execute the FIA agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll entertain a motion to, is any more discussion on the final plat, counsel? I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion on that, counsel? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That is approved. Next, we're going to move into a public hearing and consider the following request of Harbor Lakes Development to, once again, execute. We open up the public hearing. Scott, you want to give us some background on this item, please?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. What we have is a request, executive facilities improvement agreement to the tune of $275,450 roughly, and a final plat application. Once again, as with the prior application, this was followed by a zoning ordinance amendment to the PD. You can see Villa's office here. It was amended in 2016 to allow for single-family residential development. So the geometric design of the plats and the layout of the lots comports with the base residential district as being proposed by the developer. This proposes 13 single-family lots. It does have private streets. You can see the entryway geometric configuration with the gates located to the east. As with the prior application, it did have two variances associated with the preliminary plat, again, to construct lay-down curbs instead of the stand-up standard curbing intersection, as well as 3.5 to not, to allow for the double-fronted job lots. And you can see those lots, one through four, respectively, toward the interior of the development along Harbor Lakes Drive. We do have that note, again, no direct access on Harbor Lakes Drive for those four lots. They have to access and have driveway approaches onto Palmer Court, the internal street, and go through the gate. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval of the final plat application as presented, and your city staff recommends approval of the FIA. And we did notate on this particular exhibit that the sidewalks will be installed as shown on the yellow line at the same time that the streets are being installed by the developer.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearings. Anybody in the public who wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any comments or questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion to exit, for the approval of the execution of the FIA for Section 10 as presented by the developer.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the FIA? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll, we'll discuss the, the final plat. Council, any more discussion on the final plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat as presented by the applicant.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Meyer. Any more discussion on the final plat, council? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That final plat is approved. Moving to item number five, is a public hearing and consider approving a request of First National Bank of Granbury to amend the preliminary plat. Scott, can you give us some more information on this item, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. What we have is a preliminary plat application requested by First National Bank, who owns the property that's denoted as Phase Three of the Luton Ranch addition. This would be located in, just to the west of Peck Road and to the east of the McDonald's, located along Highway 377. Again, this is part of the preliminary plat application for the full buildout for Luton Ranch, Phases One through Three. This is the last phase. What's being proposed at this particular site is, is, in essence, shell space, retail shell space, roughly 10,000 feet of it. And you can see generally the kind of the site layout of the buildings with the parking conceptually laid out around the bank. The bank located to the southeast, highlighted with the, kind of the greenish bank color in the center of the existing building, is an existing plated lot. Everything to the north and to the west of that is yet undeveloped. Again, you can see the, kind of the outline of the, of the property there. What we have with this preliminary plat application is a couple of variances. We have variance requested to 3.1 to not upgrade, upgrade 377 to an urban standard facility. You can see the dedication in lieu of, and a dark hatch along 377 to accommodate the US 377 expansion to six lanes. We have a variance to Section 39 and 45 to not provide sewer along street frontages. There is existing sewer currently on the site, see if I can get to my sewer map here. And the sewer gravity flows to the nor, there we go, gravity flows to the north. So, the dash line is the existing sewer. The dark line, the solid line, is the proposed sewer tying into the existing sewer along Peck Road. And again, there's the water, you can see similarly dashed, existing and proposed is highlighted with solid line. So, the request is to not provide sewer along Highway 377 in that portion of Peck Road. Everything to the east of that and to the west is served through, through an existing sewer main, again, flows to the north into a main that parallels the existing low water crossing or creek to the north and goes east-west. You can also see a sidewalk in yellow, so we're getting a sidewalk along the 377 frontage. And then, thirdly, we have a variance request to Section 48 to not install streetlights along 377. You have a memorandum from the city engineer in your agenda packet supporting the variances. One thing that I do wanna mention in a little more detail is the bank property is a plated lot, and as a part of the development of that lot, they did escrow half of the cost of the improvement to Peck Road inclusive of sidewalk cost. So, they do have the money filed with the city regarding their half of Peck Road, in essence, from the center line west, to a curb and gutter standard and a sidewalk. There is no variance request by the applicant on this preliminary plat application for any variance to not improve or not dedicate half of their costs for Peck Road as well. So, in essence, the city's building up a bank for some of the costs, some of the capital costs for Peck Road to improve it at a later date. If they go that route, then in essence, we'll have about 400 millennial feet of cost of, or half of the cost of the improvement to Peck Road for an urban standard facility, commercial, commercial urban standard facility all the way to 377. Is there any questions regarding that?
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing on this item. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any concerns or questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat, along with the three variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 1726, approving a request of Randy Price of Tri-County, Tri-Tex Grass for the renewal of an SUP. Scott, you wanna read into this one for me, please?
Mayor, council, we've seen this application approximately a year ago. What's being requested at this site, to give you a little more location detail, this is located just to the east of the FM 167 Falk Creek Highway South intersection, heading outside the city toward Fort Worth, right before you get to the extent of our corporate boundary. This particular business is a turf grass sales site with commercial truck parking. The sales site for the grass or the turf to be located on pallets is allowed by Wright and Heavy Commercial, which is what it's zoned. The SUP is to allow for the commercial truck parking in the open area. So, the applicant has submitted a site plan showing generally where those three trucks are parked behind the main structure. In essence, it's the same site plan that the P&amp;Z City Council saw a year ago. There's no change, changes presented by the applicant. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the SUP regarding the truck parking on the site, extending the term for three years from the date of council approval. And again, as with the prior condition, that the trucks be parked on lots 11 through 13 as depicted on the site plan.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? I see Randy's still with us to answer any questions. Thank you, Randy. I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That item is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 1727, approving a request of Historic Granbury Merchants Association for an SUP to allow a carnival. Scott, you wanna read into some of that, please?
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, again, we've seen this SUP application in years prior. This is a use that's allowed under a temporary issuance of an SUP for a term no longer than one year. In this case, the zoning ordinance further specifies that these temporary outdoor entertainment uses such as carnivals can run up to no longer than 14 consecutive days. We have an application from the HGMA regarding a carnival to be located on the Reunion Ground Site. We've seen this similar type site plan before, as with the prior application a year ago. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this SUP with the same conditions that were acted on last year. First and foremost, that the applicant will need to file and have an approved event festival permit with the city prior to mobilizing. Secondly, entrance and exits along Reunion Court must be coordinated with the local authorities. This may be done at the time the event festival permit is submitted and reviewed by the city. And then, lastly, that the temporary carnival will be valid for the following days, those following, the following days were specified by the applicant on the SUP included in your agenda packet. They are May 22nd through June 20, June 4th. And then, as a side comment, we have a supplemental standard in our zoning ordinance that specifies that if these outdoor entertainment venues are located adjoining residential properties, they need to get the signatures of the surrounding residential properties. If they don't, then it prompts a three-quarter vote. So, they were aware of that. They decided not to go forward with soliciting those signatures. They just wanted to go through the process and get support from P&amp;Z and City Council. They did that last year, but this does require a three-quarter vote in order to be approved.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing on this item. Is anybody in the audience, wanna speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor?
Councilperson Meyer?
I just wanna make sure that this allows time for that carnival to come in and set up. I know we've had problems with that in the past.
I think, well, Scott, you wanna answer that one?
Well, one thing that we requested them, when they filed their SUP, is whether or not it, that, that 14-day continuum includes setup and tear down. And they did stipulate that this does include the 14-day time continuum, setup and tear down, yes. So, that's on their SUP. The last time we had that discussion at City Council, in fact, we modified our SUP application to, to really notate that, that this must include startup and tear down.
Yeah, I was looking at the date, so it looked like they can roll in on a Monday, and then the carnival would start that, that weekend.
As long as, as, as long as it's within that 14-day time continuum, they're good, and within those days specified on their SUP.
Thank you.
Council, any more questions, concerns for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, any more discussion on that SUP? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item, item number eight, is a public hearing and consider approving and following request of Dwayne Stembridge to first final plat and second to voluntary annex. Council, if you note, then the annexation will be granting the petition and also adopting the ordinance provided for that voluntary annexation. Scott, can you read in some more information on this one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. This is an application we saw as a preliminary plat not too long ago. In fact, this was part of a annexation of the Outer Loop, and the annexation of the Outer Loop included these, it looks like, five mobile homes generally. The applicant has since processed a preliminary plat application. Preliminary plat application has shown the larger portion of the property, not just those home sites, but the larger parent tract, which is denoted in yellow. The applicant is wishing to just final plat those portions of the property that are in red and leave that back portion out to be final plated at a later date. So, your final plat application are for these, are for these lots for title transfer. It does not include the back portion. However, the voluntary annexation request under the development agreement does include that portion of the parent tract. So, all the, all the variances were processed as a part of the preliminary plat application. I know we discussed during the preliminary plat application all the notes that the City Council, through P&amp;Z and City Council action, placed on the final plat that's part of your seminal, first and foremost, are water and sewer considerations. At once they're made available, that they tie on to, or extend it through the frontage of the lot and tie on to it. And that term "made available" will be defined as what's, what's on the books insofar as policy at the time the water and sewer is being made available currently. If it's 1 to 17 service units and it's within, I believe, 500 feet, they have to extend it to and through. The other issue is sidewalks. So, they'll have to, once development occurs, will have to extend sidewalks through development for the parent tract as any new development, development for those residential lots or anything that's not exempted, for example, expansion to the existing structure beyond a certain percentage or to tear down a new construction. So, they do have some exemption protection on sidewalks. That's about it, Mayor. All the, all the variances were tied to the preliminary plat. There is no more variances associated with this final plat. And so, your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the final plat as presented. This is a ministerial-type document when it comes to the voluntary annexation because this falls under Chapter 43, a subsection that allows for us to annex under one reading if it's voluntary. Your city staff recommends approval, acting on the voluntary annexation request under subsection two and A, A and B, making those statements, granting said petition for the voluntary annexation and adopting ordinance 1728, providing for the voluntary annexation. We have to read that into the minutes.
Thank you, Scott. Councilperson Parsons, I think you've made an impact on these sidewalks. I appreciate that. They, they looked right at you anyways.
Thank you for the thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any more discussion or questions for Scott on this item? If not, we'll move down to the annexation. Is that correct, Scott?
You go down.
Correct.
Final plat first.
We'll first go into the final plat. I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat as said.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion on the final plat, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we're going to the voluntary annexation, a two-part here. We will first be granting the said petition for the voluntary annexation. Any questions or concerns on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to grant the said petition for the voluntary annexation.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. More discussion on the petition? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The second part of that is adopting ordinance 17.28, providing for the voluntary annexation of that said property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that item, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved also. We will next move into item number nine, a public hearing and consider the following request of Dwayne Stembridge to, once again, final plat and also to voluntary annexation. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. We have a similar final plat application request from Mr. Stembridge again, along the same lines. This is located along Porter Court. The preliminary plat had depicted both lots, lots one and two respectfully. The applicant is wanting to sell Lot 1, which is one acre, leaving the residual portion of that parent tract unplatted at this time, but certainly they can come forward at the final plat anytime. Again, this was covered under a development agreement for voluntary annexation. If in the event they, that the applicant ever files a development application inclusive of a plat, then it kicks in a voluntary annexation request. Therefore, the entire parent tract is coming in per the development agreement. The, the standard notes have been placed on the plat as, as we discussed with the prior application regarding water, sewer, drainage and sidewalks. So, all that's been covered on the final plat application. There are no variances left on this particular property. It seems to comply with our subdivision ordinance, therefore, the plat seems ministerial. Your Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of the final plat for the one acre and voluntary annexation of the five acres. Again, it's inclusive of the parent tract. Again, it's inclusive of the parent tract. Again, Mayor, we have that two-step process required under Chapter forty-three to bring it in.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open the public hearing on item number nine. Anybody in the public wish to speak on that item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any comments or discussion on this item that you'd like to address with Scott or City Manager? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll move down to the voluntary annexation, Part One, granting the said petition for the voluntary annexation. Is there any discussion on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to grant the said petition for the voluntary annexation.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we're move, item number B, adopting the ordinance seventeen twenty-nine for providing for the voluntary annexation of this said property. Counsel, any discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen twenty-nine, providing for that voluntary annexation of that said property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is also approved. Our next item, item number ten, is a public hearing and consider the following request of Mark and Paula McDonald to first execute the FIA and also a final plat. Scott, can you read into that, please, for me?
Absolutely, Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Manager. What we have is an application to execute an FIA to support the proposed Chateau Chateau. Give you a little bit of back history on this. There was a request for a zoning amendment specifically on the center lot to accommodate a banquet hall, more specifically, a wedding reception venue located on that particular There's an existing house on the site, and that's supposed to be torn down. We have a plat showing three lots. The internal lot, Lot Two, is zoned like commercial. It's got an SUP for, again, that banquet hall. The lots to the east and west, Lot One and Three respectfully, are zoned interim holding. That zoning district only accommodates a rural estate-type development or residential. What's being proposed is the final plat, these three lots. Out of the gate immediately, the, the developers wanting to propose the Lot Two to be developed as the banquet hall or Chateau Chateau, the wedding venue. The FIA specifies that there's going to be water and sanitary sewer improvements. Water, the water line will basically be internal to development and private. The sanitary sewer line will be along East Moore and Extension. A partial variance was granted to not extend it all the way to the eastern extent of Lot One. That was granted during the preliminary plat application. You can see the summary of costs and the line items. Apologize, we made some tweaks over the time, but in essence, the FIA cost amounts to seventy-three thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars to accommodate the water and sewer improvements. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the final plat as amendment, and your city staff recommends execution of the FIA as presented by the applicant. That's it, Mayor. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearings. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, any more discussion or concerns, questions for Scott on this item? If not, we'll move into the execution of the FIA, is entertain a motion to execute the FIA.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll next look at the final plat. Counsel, any discussion or concerns on the final plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion on the final plat, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Looking forward to it, Mr. McGowan. Our next item is a public hearing and consider ordinance seventeen thirty, approving request of the City of Granbury to amend ordinance number oh-one dash eight-one-nine. Scott, can you read into that one for me, please?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Manager. Over the last year or so, we've had a few requests regarding, regarding the possibility of installing solar panels on residential homes. We do have an allowance under our current zoning ordinance. It's a bit vague, but it states that HVAC systems, and we prefer that solar panels be included in that HVAC equipment to be installed on commercial rooftops. But the ordinance is really silent on residential homes. So we've worked with a local contractor, it's Mr. Brian Schellenberger, with Apex, A-A-P-E-X, get the name right. And we've also looked at other cities' model ordinances regarding the language of solar panels. And we've cobbled something together, and we've presented this to P&amp;Z, and, and both the local contractors thought that this was reasonable in line with other ordinances adopted by cities, presented at the P&amp;Z. What's being forwarded to you is, first, that regarding residential districts where our ordinance is currently silent and really prohibits it, we're allowing for the installation of solar panels or related equipment in residential zoning districts provided they, in essence, be placed not along the street frontage. So you have three elevations that they can be tied to, and they have to be flush-mounted. They can't stick up like a sore thumb. They have to be flush-mounted with the roofline or other architectural feature. If there's a, kind of a trapdoor there, if the only way to actually benefit from the solar panel is to extend it or install it flush-mounted along the street frontage, then you can go to the Board of Adjustment and get a special exception. Special exceptions are not driven by a hardship argument. They are rather discretionary, and they have a lot of latitude. But one thing that it does do is, it gives a ZBA, first, it gives staff the opportunity to send notices out to adjoining properties, and it also gives the ZBA a little discretionary latitude to look at it architecturally and see whether or not that there's any adjoining neighbors or commentary when we broadcast that we're having a public hearing on this. So it doesn't strictly prohibit it from the front streetscape. It's just there's a process, and there's open dialogue at, at a public hearing level. So that's what's being presented in the residential district. I will also say for homes located in, in a historic district, in the HBO, you're required to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Commission as well. Again, that's a material change. It's consistent with our historic preservation ordinance. It's a material change visible from any streetscape, and it needs to be reviewed for architectural consistency by the Commission. Are there, are there any questions regarding solar panels on residential districts? Yes, sir.
If you're in a residential area, you can put them on the back of the house, but you can't put them on the front facing the street, correct?
That's correct.
How much people live behind it, you think they won't look at it?
So, again, we're using model ordinances, and what we've seen from the industry is a lot of these are, you don't get, from what we found, you don't get the reflection that, I guess, we, you hear some of the negative aspects about, and they're installed in a manner with kind of a matting to really kind of tone that down. So if, if, I guess to answer your, your question more squarely, if there's no HOA, then you're correct. Then the installation would be more administrative permitting process.
Still override the city.
The HOA can ratchet out their, leave restrictions in order to require HOA approval before they go to the city for a permit.
All right, can we talk about the AC unit, HVAC on top of buildings?
Yeah, commercial or residential?
You are.
Oh, we can go to commercial if you want to, that's fine. Sure. Are we done with the residential questions?
Are you, are you saying that you can put them on the ground or on the roof?
No, sir.
This ordinance, it'd only be on the roof?
That's correct.
Okay, what happens if, if you got a small business, and I'm just thinking out loud, but let's say it's, you know, most of your Taco Bells and stuff have them up the top anyway, right?
Correct.
Where do you rent a frog and where they don't?
So when, when you look at our exterior roof articulation standards for non-residential districts, we have a requirement that, for commercial buildings, that you have to have a architectural feature or cornice detailing that hides all HVAC equipment. So when you look at Chick-fil-A and the Brahms, for example, those are, those are good examples. You have that kind of parapet or that cornice that goes up a certain measure, and in essence, that cornice detailing is not only there for an architectural feature to get, give it, move it away from a bland kind of square box, but also to hide the HVAC reflective equipment that's on top. So this amendment to include solar panels would be inclusive in that process to, to hide that reflective equipment or that HVAC-type solar panel equipment from your passerby or on the streetscape. So that ban, that, that architectural feature, that cornice detailing, by ordinance is required to go around the building at least fifty percent. So there's ample space around that building, that roofline, to place those, those solar panels and still hide them if they're flush-mounted behind that architectural feature.
I'll now open the public hearing on this item. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any more questions or concerns on this item? Scott, what if there's a said road that was, is, well, comes in behind the house after they've installed solar panels?
If a property owner or the HOA?
Well, just to say it's planted to, to put another road that's not in yet.
Oh, then they're, so if they pulled their permit before the road comes in, they're, they're vested with the permit, and they wouldn't have to deconstruct it or, or tear it out, it's just already installed. They were first in time, in essence.
That's a good point. Okay. Counsel, any more questions, concerns for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve of the proposed amendments.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Parsons.
Second.
And second by Councilperson Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You have one nay?
Yes.
Mr. Allen? That is approved. Item number twelve, is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance seventeen thirty-one, approving request of the City of Granbury to amend ordinance number oh-one eight nineteen, as amended the City of Granbury zoning ordinance. Scott, you want to read into that one for me, please?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Manager. Our current zoning ordinance regarding historic preservation regulations allow for the filing of a certificate of appropriateness for any material change within the historic district. That may be new siding or new roofline, new supporting column, et cetera. We've talked a little bit about vesting, and we've tried to include a lot of vesting in our regulations. We, for whatever reason, have omitted a term limit regarding this in our CVA process for historic regulations. In essence, if somebody files a CVA, for example, two or three years ago, they could come back and claim that there's no term limit on it, and they can build whatever they want to. So these term limitations are a good thing when it comes to, to expectations and going through the hearing process. We wouldn't want somebody who had a CVA, you know, three or four or five years ago to pop up and say, well, I want to build it now, which they certainly have a right to do without this term limitation. So we brought this before the Historic Commission, and the Historic Commission deliberated on the matter, and they've agreed that they wanted to see term limits on CFAs. They suggested one year. They, they made that recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission as they realized the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the recommendation to you regarding ordinance amendments. So your Planning and Zoning Commission rec, supported the Historic Commission recommendation of one year, and what's being brought forth to you is a term limit for a CVA issued by the Historic Commission for one year after it will expire and become null and void. Of course, they have the latitude in their motion. If they, if they don't motion on it, it'll be one year. But they have the latitude in their motion to extend that or shorten that if it's rolled in their motion, and that language is, is in the ordinance too. So if they want to give somebody two years or a year and a half, because it's a long-term project, they can certainly extend that in their motion. Your Planning and Zoning Commission's recommending approval of the ordinances, ordinance amendment, allowing for a one-year term limit for CFAs as presented by P&amp;Z.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearing on this item. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, are there any more, any discussion on this item or questions for Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve these said amendments.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
So moved. Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any, any more discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item, item number thirteen, is our second reading of an ordinance granting the United Electric Cooperative Services Incorporated an electric power franchise to use the public right-of-way of the City of Granbury. Chris, I'm going to turn this over to staff.
You may. I'll just take the liberty to read the caption.
Thank you.
And, "An ordinance granting to United Electric Cooperative Services Incorporated its successors and assigns electric power franchise to use the present and future streets, alleys, highways, public utility easements, public ride, public ways and other public property, public right-of-ways of Granbury, Texas, providing for the repeal of all prior franchise ordinances to United Electric Cooperative Services Incorporated, its predecessors and assigns, providing compensation, therefore providing for an effective date and a term of said franchise, providing for written acceptance of this franchise and finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public." I would like to say that the word "electric" needs to be stricken from this in the second reading. United Cooperative Services doesn't have the word "electric" anywhere in the title. So that's a typo, and we will correct that.
Thank you, Chris. Good find. Counsel, we've had the, the reading, and the note that we will strip that from the reading, the word "electric," all the way through it. Thank you.
The next step is, is that we will publish this twice in thirty days at very expense in our local newspaper in its entirety for the public to be able to read. We will correct that word.
How much per year, Chris, is that?
Our franchise fee roughly is about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually right now from, from this company, if I'm not mistaken.
Counsel, we'll move on to item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is to consider authorizing the city manager to contract with the Fane Group to remove and replace the concrete at the northeast corner of Bridge and Crockett Street. I'm going to call upon Chris Coffin to give you some information on that. You would please, Chris?
Thank you. It was brought to our attention by a couple of council members that we needed to meet with the property owners at that intersection related to the, I guess it would be the northeast corner. And, and so we, we did meet with them, discussed the, the current improvements that were proposed, and identified the reason for not being able to exceed what was being designed there. It was because of limited right-of-ways and easements, and they have willingly offered
because of limited right-of-ways and easements, and they have willingly offered to give us what we need to go ahead and continue our streetscape at that corner to make it conform aesthetically with the rest of the development. So we reached out to Freezen Nichols, our engineer, Chris Bosco, and he's here tonight. And he came over and kind of looked it over and did some measuring, sent some crews over, and they did some more measuring. And they came up with some pricing based on the unit pricing that we currently have with the Fane Group to extend our improvements there. We would like to treat this as a separate agreement, so it'll be a separate invoice outside of the tech stop project, just simply to keep the administration simple internally and not have to get approval from them and slow us down more for these improvements. Either way, we have to pay 100 percent of it because we were getting all the grant money already appropriated to the project as it is. So we also reached out to the county commissioner in that precinct and showed him what we could envision with these improvements as it relates to the jail restroom handicap parking and tying all that together with a new ramp for driving, you know, driving up off the street. And their proportion of it was about $11,200. And I talked with him, and we both agreed that, first off, he wanted to make sure that council knew that they're very interested in working with us on this project, and that I'm the one that suggested that we wait on the county part and let them do that at a later date. They could probably do some of that work themselves because they have the equipment to remove the existing pavement, which is asphalt, and they could probably hire a local contractor to finish that as a state compared to the unit price that we have for the sidewalk work. So it's a large flat area, which you can get done cheaper than you can curb gutters and sidewalks. So they agreed to do that, and so our spreadsheet that's in your packet shows the total project with engineering was $60,000, which included the parking area on the county property. We'd like to stricken that from the proposal tonight and put a cap in there at $49,999 to allow us to move forward to basically landscape that corner with more concrete and tree and park bench, and also acquire some easements from the property owner to allow us to do that in perpetuation. We'll always have that right-of-way there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. In the event that you vote for this tonight, then Freezen Nichols, as part of that $49,000 price tag, would be doing the engineering and design exactly what we need there. So, and they said that they could do that within five days turnaround, which is perfect timing for the project where we're at. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions on this item?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allen?
I'm glad to see Chris here with Freezen Nichols. I, for one, as a councilman, was shocked whenever I got a phone call from an attorney down there that owns the building and said, "Why wouldn't we include it?" You are including. Then I came up, got a little set of drawings, and they wouldn't include it. Did y'all ever ask them to, for an easement when y'all were doing this, talking to all the business people, Chris?
I'll let him answer, but I know the answer.
Go ahead.
No, I'll let him.
Yeah, so when we submitted-
Chris, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Oh, Chris Bosco with Freezen Nichols. One of the conditions for the TAP application was that the city had all the right-of-way, and so when we identified the scope of the project, we actually had to provide them documents in the application that showed that the city had all the right-of-way, and so the scope was defined by the right-of-way that was available for the project. And that particular area we're talking about is actually, it's partially on private property. The right-of-way line kind of cuts through the middle of that parking lot and that landscaped area.
So when you went and talked to them, what did they say?
So we met with them as part of the environmental process, and they talked about trying to extend those improvements. At that time, we had had the environmental approval, and, you know, it would acquire additional right-of-way. So we basically are, we're doing improvements on that corner, but the improvements are within your right-of-way.
But, you know, here we go, right over here, you went all the way down both sides of the driveway coming into City Hall, new sidewalk and stuff. You're doing that at all the corners, but you got this one where we're not doing nothing? How'd you miss it?
We didn't see it as a miss, and we were doing, those extensions are, like the area you described, that's on Bridge Street was actually the area we took up some of the limestone sidewalk. And so the limits that we were trying to achieve was areas where sidewalk was damaged, whereas that area, it's not damaged at this point.
How much are y'all charging on this, on this $5,000 project?
Our fee for that was $1,600.
Would you waver that to help us?
And wave it in-
Not charge us for it.
And the basis is that you feel-
Basis is that, did you talk, Mr. Mobley, you got something to say?
No, I mean, I was looking for the, I was looking for the item.
I can't hear both y'all.
Go ahead.
Anyway, you talked to Mr. Haddock, is who you talked to?
It, I believe it was his wife at the time.
Okay. And was she willing to give you the right-of-way or not?
Well, we didn't discuss right-of-way, because, so I mentioned, Al, when we did the TAP application, we were focused on only property we had right-of-way. When we were meeting with them, we were in the middle of the environmental process getting that approved, and we didn't even discuss acquiring any right-of-way at that time.
So y'all were just going to leave that corner like it was?
Yes, sir.
Pick them up in the middle?
Well, we did, you know, that has an area, the bulbout, so that area that's in the current plans has one of the bulbouts and the ramps in that area.
Spend $2 million and miss that corner or not do anything with it, makes me think a lot less of Freezen Nichols, and I've been on the council for eight years, or seven, one of his spend. To me, that's like a slap in the face, I'm going to speak to myself. I think Freezen Nichols ought to waver any charge on that, and let's get it done.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I can, you know, speak to that. I need to, you know, visit with my boss at Freezen Nichols. I feel like in that case, that wasn't a miss. I, you know, that's added scope to the work and the hours we provided to Chris as relative to adding that in.
The work was there already, just a matter of following up. You don't feel like, y'all, if you don't feel like Freezen Nichols should help us any, that's fine, if that's your decision.
I think Chris has got something to add to that, Mr. Count.
Chris, could you articulate what's currently on the plan at that corner?
So on that corner, you know, it has one of the bulbouts, and it has new ramps, and we just extended the sidewalk to the point of the end of those ramps. So where you see today where it's kind of, the sidewalk's right against that landscaping, that actually extends out the four-foot bulbout that we have on all the corners. And then, you know, the intersection's getting improved just as it is on the other corners.
I would like to add that there's some kind of a tree or something that you left there because it's on private property, and there's signage.
Right.
And they're willing to let all that go and be redone through this process if y'all approve it. And they would like to get those sidewalks, you know, extended, I mean, they're going to benefit from it on, for their property, but we're also going to benefit for the pedestrians' sake to travel through there to the museum.
No, I agree.
We don't have much of a right-of-way towards this building there.
I'm probably the brokeest guy up here at $50,000, a lot of money, but that's okay.
Counsel, any more discussion or concerns for either Chris or Chris?
I've got, what's my-
Counsel?
Um, Chris, the city manager and I were down this afternoon on Bridge. Can you explain, you know, we've got, we poured the sidewalk, and then we have this like a six-inch wide curb, if you will, and then we've got the pavers, and then we've got the limestone curb. Okay? I'm just curious, why is, is, why is there a strip of concrete between the pavers and the sidewalk?
So you're talking about, so we have the limestone curb, and then there's basically a-
And then there's just, it was a pore for the-
Okay, Councilman Couch, I'm going to go ahead and have to stop you on that. We don't have that on the agenda, so let's don't, yeah, so let's, we'll talk about that at a later date. Any more discussion on the item that we have on the agenda, counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion to authorize our city manager to contact with the Fane Group to remove and replace the concrete at the northeast corner of Bridge and Crockett Street.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Okay.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We have one nay. Mr. Mobley?
I would like to ask one more question.
Mr. Coffin?
Chris, are there any other areas that we poured concrete, or we were planning to pour concrete that are on private right-of-ways, that we have to park?
None on private, the, you know, we had the agreement with the county, so the county was the only entity that, that was other than what was done by the city.
I just wanted to clarify that, because I remember when I first got here, there was the big controversy on who owned the sidewalks, and we hired y'all to survey what we owned, and that's how you develop that scope. And I, I kind of see where, where that corner was chopped away there a little bit, but we did get the four-foot radius curb bulbout done in your plan, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure. And let me, while we're talking, no, it's not on the agenda.
Make sure you're on the agenda. Okay, counsel. Thank you, Chris. That is approved. Pursuant to our Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, the Texas County Code of City Council, we will now convene into executive session with all council present for the following matters, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. Counsel, now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If there are no more discussion, this council meeting is adjourned.